Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting. This is Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes? Anybody want to discuss any changes or anything? Do I hear a move to approve?
I'm moved to approve.
A second.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Lark?
Abstain.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Beck.
Abstain.
All right, so do we have any reports from anyone? Just go down the line, Commissioner Finch.
None. Just a quick mention that I came here straight from the Corps Commission where they're discussing in the domain of Kimberly-Clark. It was a packed room with lots of discussion. And we'll see how it goes because it's happening right now.
Did you hear any of the testimony?
Yes, I've heard, most of the testimony I heard was, most of the testimony I heard was basically echoed in kind of public statements that have already been made on both sides. So there's a, there should be already a trove of existing sentiments out there.
Nothing to report.
Nothing.
No report.
No report for me.
All right. No report for me as well. All right, so do we have any staff reports at this time?
We'll have a meeting, a meeting on two weeks from tonight. And I wanted to mention also that a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned that the City Council has asked the Planning Commission to prepare a climate action plan. Their city is getting ready to send out a request for qualifications for consultant help on that, probably going out next week, I believe. Once we have a consultant on board, then we'll probably have, schedule a meeting to, I'm not sure exactly when, but we'll schedule a meeting to talk about the prospective climate action plan for the commission and take public comments before they prepare an actual draft of the plan. So that's it. David, do you have anything? Okay, nothing else, thank you.
I see Commissioner Lavra joined us. Did you have anything you'd like to report?
No, bad traffic. Bad parking, that's all. Sorry.
All right, so if there's anyone in the audience at this time that has something they would like to speak to that's not on the agenda, please feel free to come to the podium. I didn't, I didn't see any signups. So I guess we'll go ahead and move along to item number one, the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program.
Richard Charity, Engineering Services Manager for Public Works. I'm here to present the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. This is a financially unconstrained list of projects that are built from the projects that are listed in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. There are more specific descriptions that meet the needs of grant staff in Public Works as well as in transit. The only change to this year's six-year TIP from last year is a further definition that was required by the Federal Transit Administration to identify passenger amenities shelters as a grant line item that has been part of this particular list. It's a normal part of business, but it was a specific type of grant and the grant staff required that it be presented and be a single line item. This is a list of just less than $5 billion. It includes a lot of things that are not Everett's responsibilities. You'll notice freeways and interstates, high-capacity transit, and port projects. And it's just a way to keep some of those things before the state and the federal government as priorities that Everett would like to see in the future. And so those projects move forward. In the italics, there are a number of projects in italics. Those are items that are funded, are either underway or will be underway, that are funded from the Connecting Washington list that started in 2016. And so those are things that are important to Everett and are being funded by the state and moving forward under state guidance as they do projects. And so just as a general reminder, this is, authorizes staff to seek federal and state funding for any and all of the phases that are listed. And the phases are listed in sort of a speculative way. The dollar amounts are planning level of estimates. And so they are not particularly focused on anything other than being able to begin a project at a certain point. And you'll notice that a lot of them say they'll be beginning in 2019. That's if funded on all of the, almost all of the projects. If they have an earlier year, then they are probably projects that receive some funding, either for preliminary engineering, for right-of-way, or for construction. And transportation projects can take a long time, and so they will be on this rolling list for a considerable time. So I asked for your recommendation to the City Council to approve this. I will be going before City Council for a briefing tentatively scheduled for the 12th and then a public hearing in action on the 19th on a resolution to move this to, and it goes to the State Traffic Engineer.
Does anyone have questions regarding the six-year tip?
One question. Hi, Richard. Was there any projects that fell off the list from the previous year?
There was a phase of one, it's the 41st Street Freight Corridor. And so that's a Phase One that is a project completed to assist the port with over-dimensional freight moving from the port through 41st Pacific and Rucker and then out to 41st, going the other direction, West Marineview Drive. And so it, it made it so that city staff does not have to go out in the middle of the night and move transportation arms and traffic devices so that large objects can move through. It was spurred mainly by a big boon in moving large wind towers through the city at night.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Zelinski?
This is more of an observation. I think it would be helpful in future summits if you included a little memo that sort of highlighted some of, like the type of question that Chris just asked about whether projects were added to the list or if projects were completed during the past year. It'd be, I think, useful to have that information so that we can see and the council can see how things are moving along or not moving along. My presumption is that the city has some role in all of these projects, even if it's primarily a state project. The city has some contribution that it's making to the project. Is that true or false?
Not necessarily. Sometimes on the larger federal projects, the city and, and I will seek grants to do planning kinds of studies in order to keep it before the state so that it essentially is enough of inspiration for them to move forward and do something that the city would like them to do. They have their own priorities and they have, you know, I mean, anything that's considered a mega project, say like the US Two Trestle or some of the other big projects, I mean, they have to program them years ahead. And so they have a different perspective on those projects than maybe the city does or city staff do. And so we're part of that as a stakeholder, but not necessarily as a funding participant.
Okay.
But we do a system partner where we think we can maximize the project.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Finch?
Two questions. One, are the lists, I guess this is page one, are these prioritized in any way?
No, they are not. The number is just for identifying that it's on the list. So there's no priority order. And again, there's no, no commitment to move the project forward. It's just from the list and it's being, funding is being sought. And the reason that the city uses that philosophy is that the state grantors and the federal grantors always change their criteria for what they will award funds to. And so as those things change, it enables staff to pick the projects and the phases that they think will have the best opportunity to be competitive in a grants, grants process or, or any other federal process.
Great, thank you. And then the other question was, under principal arterials, project number one, West Marineview Drive, Rucker, 41st Freight Route improvements, is that what you were just talking about?
That would be the continuing, there is a Phase Two that's funded.
I see.
Under Connecting Washington, that's a much larger project than the piece that was done to just kind of help move freight.
Phase Two is funded?
Phase Two is in Connecting Washington, yes.
Okay. And so when is that one scheduled to begin?
That one is in the out-years of the process. And so it is not due to be designed or in the biennia, I believe it's 21, 23, then 23, 25 for right-of-way, and 25, 27 for construction. And so it's one of the projects that was in the second half of the, the Connecting Washington funding list.
I see. Any other questions for commissioners? So at this time, I think we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, I have no signees. Does anybody want to move to close the public hearing?
I would so move.
Second.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Chair Beck, sorry.
Yes, to both. So before me right now, I have the Planning Commission Resolution Number 1913. And this is a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for 2020 to 2025. Any comments or thoughts or would anyone care to move to adopt?
So moved.
A second.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Chair Beck?
Yes.
All right, so moving along to item number two, rethink zoning residential zones. David, take it away.
Thank you. David Sullheim, Long Range Planning Manager. And tonight, I'm going to continue the dialogue that we started, I believe, last month about some of the residential discussion as we rethink zoning over the next two years. So just kind of stepping back for a second, same, actually, I might have done this in front of City Council, so you might not have seen this, but part of the rethink zoning is that there's basically a lot of balls in the hopper right now that kind of come out of this process. We have planning starting on light rail stations. The city is starting a housing strategy. We're going to get new growth forecasts out of Puget Sound Regional Council, the Vision 2050 process. And at the same time, we have a lot of code complexity. So the outcome that we see is basically kind of two phases. First is the first phase of a code update that would happen. In fact, we've been taking on some of those chapters that you've been involved with, the SIGN chapter, for example, the Critical Areas chapter. So we've been doing that as we go along, but the main update happening next year in 2020. But then future plan updates, because the light rail station planning is going to be over the next three to four years. The growth forecast and the allocation to Everett will be happening next year. And so taking those types of things and looking at growth needs within the community and also trying to look at the land use around some of the light rail stations and things like that, might be things that we do, we take up in 2023 as part of the plan update. So some of the bigger, perhaps fundamental shifts, perhaps would happen in 2023. So as we look at some of the rethink zoning, some of the big picture issues is looking at housing affordability, the accommodation of growth, again, light rail. And then at your next meeting, two weeks from now, we're going to talk about the commercial and industrial zones. And so looking at how it syncs up with kind of the economic forces within our, our community. And then secondly is really, has our zoning become overly complex? So in the comprehensive plan, and we actually did the first phase of this this last year when we reduced 28 different land use designations down to six, we basically have two residential land use groupings. We have the single family and we have the multifamily. And in the single family, it's characterized by areas really that are predominantly developed already. Homeownership is predominant in those areas. It does allow some other housing types within there, and the height of buildings are typically low in the two to three stories and the density of how many homes per acre is, is in the range of five to 15. For multifamily, on the flip side, it's near transit or employment, or sometimes it might serve as a transition buffer to other more intensive uses like industrial lands. It also has the full range of public facilities and services. There should be open space in parks within walking distance. In this category, really heights have a wide range. So, and we'll talk about that in a second of how we are looking at approaching heights within the multifamily. And then densities are at the, the next tier of 15 units per acre and up. So as a reminder, our existing residential zones, single family constitutes 46% of Everett's planning area. That's excluding any of our city that's underwater in the tidal waters or Lake Chaplin. And we have five zones, so there's five, five different single-family zones. And then our multifamily zones is another 9% of Everett's planning area. And again, there's five zones in the multifamily. So overall, we have, you know, well over half of the city's own primarily for residential purposes and nearly half for single-family purposes. And so as we start thinking about the residential zones, and we provided you with a paper on this, it's starting to look at some, some code simplification ideas. And so, you know, so we started asking, as we look at dissecting the code a little bit, there, there's some things that starts making you wonder, it's like, for example, can you really tell the difference between a 5,000-square-foot lot and a 6,000? Can people walking in the neighborhood really tell that difference? Can you tell the difference between 12 units per acre and 15 or 20 units and 29? When you look at building heights, really, are building heights based on zones, geography, or both? You know, how should we look at building heights? And then when we look at the uses that are allowed in the different zones, can they really be grouped into two? And we walk through the existing zones and in your paper, you have the information about how all those uses. And clearly, there's clear distinction between single-family and multifamily in the current zoning structure as well. So just to kind of give you a visual preference, here, as you look at these two pictures, which lot is larger?
It's a trick question, it's R2.
It's R2, so it's larger or smaller?
I'm...
It's the exact opposite. It actually is R2 allows smaller lots, but that lot's larger. And so when you look at the size of the building, the, the streetscape and the setback from the street, you know, in large measure, these things. And so again, this is that distinction between 5,000 and 6,000, but we, but in, but in Everett, we create a different zone and different rules just based on that, that standard. And so as you look at some of places like this, you don't really see really that, that big distinction. So as we look at density, which building has the highest density? In here. Riverfront townhouses or the building in the 3100 block of Norton?
I think the Norton project actually has higher density.
The architect has, has a good sense of that.
I'm just familiar with the project.
Still cheating.
I don't know.
And she's right. The one on the left has 16 dwelling units per acre and the one on the right, 29. And, but again, I think that when you look at images like this, clearly, I think there's a different architectural character between the two. And so I think when you look, at least for me personally, when I look at the 29 dwelling units per acre, I don't see that as being any more intrusive to the neighborhood than the 16 dwelling units per acre. So when we think about things, it's really a little bit more about design and character fitting in than, than how many units per acre. So when we did Metro Everett, so one of the approaches that we did there is that we didn't really, in all the areas, we didn't have the height map to match the zoning necessarily. And so we looked at, really there was the geography of the area more. And you can see in here, the red, red lines is the, the boundaries of where the heights are and they go through between residential and commercial in these areas. And so they didn't really make a distinction as to the zoning district. So a height map doesn't necessarily have to always match zoning. And really, we can start looking at the context of where, where are the appropriate heights that fit that, that neighborhood or that area to make sure that it fits in there. So we drafted some concepts, see some of initial reaction to, to this, so we see where we go from this. And so what we think has some concept in the residential zones for single family is to, is to reduce the five zones down to two. And so land use designation for single family would have two, and for now, we just named them RS1 and RS2. And multifamily, same thing, reducing five multifamily designations down to two of RM1 and RM2. And so in this concept, in the single family, try to develop some initial criteria as to where this might be situated. And we haven't mapped any of the areas. And I do have one thing in red and underlined there, when I talk about transit, in your memo, I did not have that in there. And it was intended to be within the frequent transit corridor, so those areas that have three, three or more trips per hour. And so it's not just any transit corridor because really, the whole city would be covered, well, not the whole city, but a lot of the city would be covered by that. So that was a mistake on my part. So, so in the RS1, so concept, and these are what might be designated, and it could be any of these criteria. So lot sizes are generally larger, 10,000 square feet and above, and terrain is steeper. This could be areas without alleys. It could be areas with incomplete sidewalk networks. And we have quite a few areas within the city that are like that. And again, it's areas not within a quarter-mile frequent transit and rail stops. So on the RS2 designation, smaller platted lots and flatter terrain. This could be areas with alleys and then this could be areas within a quarter to half-mile frequent transit. And the reason there's a range here is that some, some indication that when we think about light rail, particular for distance of light rail, is we want to kind of look at a half-mile radius from the light rail stations potentially. Because light rail coming every four minutes, that people are more willing to walk farther to light rail within those areas and, and bus service. So in the use table that we've kind of put together, and again, this is, this isn't the complete list of all the uses, this is just some of the initial concepts, some of the larger ones. And the single-family zones, looking at the different things between single-family detached, attached, duplex on up in the single-family zones. So single-family kind of highlights, I guess, some of the ones that are clearly, single-family detached would be permitted. The single-family attached, we're identifying as potentially permitted with conditions. And one of the things that we thought that might work in here is what we call a REV2 process. So this gives notice to adjacent property owners. But then to have another standard in there that would require a cluster subdivision to encourage homeownership, and we, and we talked about that previously, is that one of the things that makes some of this additional housing types perhaps more acceptable if it's a little bit more encouraging of homeownership within the areas. And so we came up with that idea to say, well, if we require a cluster subdivision for that, that housing type, then that, that would be encouraging ownership. And of course, design standards for compatibility and actually, Commissioner McGinn gave a paper, and I think maybe everyone got that too. So, so looking at, again, some of the design quality, some, some issues around that for compatibility is a big part of some of this conversation. And the single-family zones, looking at duplexes as being permitted in both of the zones with some limits on location. For example, we could look at duplex being allowed in corner lots. Design standards for compatibility again is part of that. And then as we get up into the higher, more units, so like triplexes, up through multifamily in the RS1 zone, all that would be prohibited. But in the RS2, the triplex and fourplex could have some permitted concepts in there, but again, the idea of notice to neighbors and some design standards for compatibility. So none of that would happen without both notice to neighbors and some design standards to ensure compatibility with adjacent neighborhood. And then as we look at some of the other types of uses in the single-family zone, from accessory dwelling units, cottage housing, rooming house, supportive housing, and temporary shelters, accessory dwelling units, this was an ordinance that was passed about two years ago. And so we added accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in single-family zones and will continue that. In this concept, cottage housing, looking at permitted with some conditions. Right now, cottage housing is not allowed in single-family zones. We kind of talked through that a little bit at the last meeting about this. And so some of the development standards, looking at is project size, some density limits, and again, some design standards to make sure that that happens. In large measure, we're not really sure that there's probably many opportunities for this type of housing actually to be built in the city because usually it requires a piece of property a little bit larger to, to put together. Other housing types from rooming houses, supportive housing, and temporary shelters, we have all as prohibited within the single-family zones. And so some of that is, is a change from what the current zoning is in place. So when we look at some of the single-family zone standards, concept here of looking at minimum lot area in the RS1, 7,000 square feet, and the RS2, 4,500. The RS1 at 7,000, that is an increased lot size from some of our, our zoning, but not from, from all. But the, the change that we have is that right now in our zoning code is complex where the different housing types requires larger lot sizes. And so part of the concept is that we get away from that. What we really do is we talk about the development standards of the height, the building design, lot coverage, setbacks, things like that, let that control rather than say you have to have a larger piece of property for. Minimum lot width is a little bit wider lot for the RS1 zone currently. I think you can get 60-foot in some of our, our zones, 60-foot wide lot, so that's a little bit wider than current. And then maximum lot coverage, largely about the same standards, 35% and 40% lot coverage. Maximum building heights, 28 feet to 35 feet. In the RS2, the 35 feet is a little bit taller than the current limit of 28. And, but we'd also perhaps look at some allowances for height modification because one of the things that we see is people design a building that's compatible with the neighborhood, but they end up at 29 feet, and they change the roof pitch in order to meet the height requirements rather than the design compatibility. So looking at some abilities for some height modifications within that. For density, the only time this would apply is actually in any of those cottage or cluster housing concepts. And so looking at density limits of six units per acre in the RS1 and 15 units per acre in the RS2. And then for front setbacks, same standards as current of maintaining a 20-foot front yard setback. So in the multifamily zones, again, five zones down to two. And in the RM1 zone, what we're looking at, there is areas that are already zoned multifamily and not within quarter-mile of frequent transit or rail, or zoned single-family and within quarter-mile of frequent transit and rail. And so this would allow us to look at some of those areas with those changes. But again, some of those fundamental land use changes, we may not take up in the next year because that's changing the underlying land use designation for those properties. And so that might be part of the 2023. And so that might be part of the 2023 comprehensive plan update. So right now, we're trying to build some of the criteria for future zone changes. And so want to get some of these concepts, but it doesn't mean that everywhere within that, that we would come out with a map that says we're going to change single family neighborhoods to multifamily unless there's a request of the property owner in that area. In the RM2, those are areas currently zoned for high density multifamily. This would include Metro Everett and its areas within the quarter to half mile of frequent transit and rail existing or planned because for light rail, it doesn't exist yet. So we're going to have planned. So for the multifamily uses, so a little bit of change in the single family side of things is that new restriction for single family, multifamily zones. When we adopted the Metro Everett plan, we prohibited, we required at least three units to be built. And so we didn't allow single family detached anymore. And so this would be expansion of that concept to the rest of the multifamily zones in the city. And the single family attached, we're looking at permitted to allow that in the RM1 zone, but with design standards again as part of that. And then all the multifamily uses, the permitted in the duplex to up through five units in the RM1, but prohibited in the RM2 because it's a higher density zone. Again, we're trying to get three units or more. So the concept is we want to see some density built within that area. And all these would have design standards. We currently have multifamily design standards, and we'll be revisiting those design standards as part of this process as well. So same thing with the other uses in the multifamily zones. So the different ones that are, would be allowed from accessory dwelling units, cottage housing currently permitted, rooming houses, supportive housing, those are all currently allowed. And then temporary shelters as well. Temporary shelters would have what we call a REV3 process, and that's a public hearing before the hearing examiner as part of that. So the development standards here, minimum lot area, just making them consistent. Right now, 4,500 square feet is drafted in here, slight reduction down from 5,000. Minimum lot width staying the same at 50 feet. Lot coverage, there's no maximum lot coverage under current standards. Maximum building heights in the RM1 zone, we'd see that up to five floors and up to 25 floors in the RM2. But we would have a height map that, again, that would use the metro model to have a height map that would show where the different heights are allowed in there. Maximum density in the RM1, 30 to 80 units per acre. The higher density would only be allowed if affordable housing is provided. So trying to get an incentive for affordable housing to be put in there. And front setbacks in the RM1, 20 feet. This is kind of a transition with single family zones and then 10 feet in the RM2. And that's current standards. And then open space requirement between 100 and 150 square feet per unit, which is pretty consistent with the current standards. But there's basically about four or five different standards that exist. And so it's trying to consolidate those. So with that, again, kind of the idea with some of this is to get some initial input and feedback based on planning commission discussion and direction from this is that we would start refining this. We would start looking at, you know, additional additions to this, perhaps mapping out the zones and starting to work on some of the development standards in more depth to be bringing back to you over the next couple of months.
One quick question, David. So the attached accessory dwelling units, those would be similar as what you presented with the attached? Because they weren't addressed in the...
Correct, yes.
So does anyone have questions for David?
I would just love a little clarification on, so we're talking about townhomes in certain areas and ownership opportunities. But, you know, help me maybe understand a little bit better reconciling that with lot size requirements. So we have a lot saying it has to be this big, but, you know, we have a townhome that has, that lot could accommodate, say, five townhomes. Are we using a fee simple model to split that lot up? Or what's the, like, how do we do that?
Well, good question. We've got to work on writing all those rules. But I think part of, part of the idea that we had is a cluster subdivision. So basically, the cluster subdivision throws out those minimum lot size. So you don't have a traditional thing. So that's where you start looking at the density requirements of how many units are allowed within that area.
Gotcha, understood.
David, do you anticipate there'll be different design standards based on geographic location?
Probably. I think it's going to be different a little bit based on the zones. You know, right now, we kind of have design standards that are multifamily across the board that just talks about multifamily things. But we haven't started exploring too much of that. So I mean, if you had a thought that this is part of that engagement process of what you'd love us to explore.
Well, I guess my thinking is, yes. And to further that thought, I'm not sure that we're making this any less complex. It seems that the current residential zoning, in some ways, is broken out by geographic location. And so it's almost as if we're swapping the X and Y axis and saying it's more simple, but in the same way, we're just rewriting it in a similarly complex way. So I don't know if that's actually true because I haven't gone through, you know, the waterfall of different requirements. But now, if I look at the code, if I'm in a specific zone, I can go to that zone and look at a lot of, almost all of the requirements and prohibitions for use and building form and setbacks within that specific zone. In this way of categorizing it, I have to flip back and forth between potentially height maps and zoning classifications and design standards. And so it's an open question. I don't have the answer. But I want to make sure that we're going to go through this process, that we're actually doing something that's making it less complex and more useful rather than just organizing the information in a different way.
Yeah, the current code has actually design standards in a separate place. So you don't, the current code, you can't go, in fact, several of the land use zones, zoning districts have no chapter whatsoever. So there is no chapters on individual, single family, for example. So they're either in the use tables in one chapter, development standards in another chapter, and design standards and all the other things, they're scattered all over the place. Same thing for multifamily. The multifamily design standards are all in a separate location. So none of that, none of that's consolidated in any location. So I don't see that anything that we're doing at all would make it more complex than it is right now because it's all over the place.
Sure, I appreciate that. I guess when I look at Metro Everett, I think there was a lot of time put in by the planning commission, which I was not on at the time, to identify where the boundary should be of Metro Everett, but also within the uses within Metro Everett. It seems as though you're going to go through a, we are going to go through a similarly challenging and laborious process to do that with these more simplified zoning designations. And again, it's just, it's an open question, but I want to make sure that rather than refining what we have and making it more clear, is it better to switch how we're doing it in this way? And I don't have the answer. It's just something I wanted to pose to you.
Yeah.
I think for my part, I appreciate seeing the maps. So seeing a map would be helpful for me to organize my thoughts based on the information that we were given today. But I did appreciate the depth, the detail that was presented. I think that that was helpful for me to start to understand how these different zones would be broken down. I do think that ultimately, as someone who was pretty familiar with consulting the code as to what is allowed and what is not allowed in an architectural design, I think what is proposed ultimately will be simpler for people to reference. I think if it's given in a more digestible format like these graphs. But I think at this point in our process, it does seem complicated. It does seem more complicated than the existing code. But I think that that is where we are currently in how we're sorting out what stays, what goes, what makes sense, what doesn't. It is a little bit, I think it's going to get messier before it gets cleaner. That's my understanding of where we are in the process. But I would appreciate seeing a map that corresponds to the kind of information that we are given today to help clarify at this point in the process. But my understanding is that over time, with more discussion, it will absolutely become more straightforward, more clear, more consolidated. I think that that's what we can expect to see. But correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I mean, you know, again, you know, part of this process is kind of an iterative process. And so we kind of want to talk about the concepts before we do a lot of the work kind of thing. So, but, you know, we have written an outline to try to take all of our code and reconstruct it to make it more useful and easy to find things. And so part of that is an internal discussion with the folks that have to administer it that are used to all these questions and conversations. So, I mean, that's for the code complexity, that's our whole goal. And so when Commissioner Finch asks about standards on geographic, I mean, that's why I kind of hesitate because nothing's really come to mind so far. And so, you know, but a little bit of the zones, for example, is geographic. I mean, one of the questions that we have is, is single family zones, for example, of looking at and housing types within quarter mile frequent transit routes. And so that itself will start to find some map boundaries and find some uses itself. But you'll, should be able to easily find that in one consolidated use table. And so you'll know whether or not that single family attached housing type is allowed in the RS1 zone. It'll be in the use table. You can find that. And then you go into a section to find what the design standards are for that type of thing. So...
I think applying, I think applying design standards per zone is appropriate. I think that that would eliminate any disparity between regions in our city that seems, that seems like something we would not want to do. I think per zone is an appropriate approach because it ensures that there's an equitable distribution of standards and rules, no matter where you are in the city, as long as you're following the rules per your zone. I wouldn't want, for example, a design standard to be more strict in North Everett than South Everett, for example.
We're not anticipating doing something like that.
Sure.
Commissioner Lark?
Oh, one thing, well, two things, actually, very quickly. First of all, one of the things I like that's being discussed is we're talking about making, you know, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes more accessible into certain, in more places here in the city, it seems like. And one of the follies, I think, that happened in Seattle is it was either very low, low density housing, and then you had your 10-story buildings, and there was nothing in between. And I see more space for a missing middle in this, in what's being discussed here. And I think that, for me, that is a priority and a value. Those are easier to build, like, those, that density is cheaper to build, maintains neighborhood feel, and is, you know, grows our housing stock, which is what we, I think, is a priority for us to do in our city. And so what, the conversation elements I see here are, in here, I'm excited by, we see that opportunity there. Secondly, going back to, you know, not creating geographic areas based off the zoning, I do, I am interested and wanted to ask this a little bit later, but the RS1 areas are kind, you mentioned, and somebody noticed that there's areas without alleys. And so I feel like that is carving off a huge chunk of the city that will always be RS1 that could take on growth because it doesn't have an alley because it was built in the 80s with cul-de-sacs instead.
Yeah, so, and I think I said that in the memo, but I didn't necessarily add it all into the slide. But when you look at the list of the concepts here, it's not that you have to meet all those criteria, it's any of these criteria. And these are real generalized right now. Again, these are trying to get to some bullet points here to kind of get some conversation around these things. And then we can take that and start working on some of the mapping. But the idea is, is that we would start drafting that, again, as guidance for future rezones down the road. And so if someone wanted to go to the RS2 zone, for example, from an RS1, you know, you'd be asking the question, is this an area that's characterized by small platted lots and flatter terrain? Yes or no? Is it an area with alleys? Yes or no? Is it an area within a quarter to half mile of frequent transit? If you didn't meet any of those criteria, then that doesn't, that's not going to be an RS2 zone. So it wasn't intended that you had to meet all of those criteria. So some of the stuff up above, so you're right, it could be a large area if you looked at it as a complete list.
But as our, in our initial, at some point, we're going to have to make the initial designation saying this is RS1 and this is RS2. And my concern is just if we have, actually have that in there, that we will, that we will be cutting out a lot of places where we could add density to the city. And so I'm just, I'm, maybe I can, maybe that could be explained a little bit more or we can justify that one. But I have a, you know, I have a criticism of that particular component.
Yeah, okay. And I mean, we're, you know, based on the feedback, again, we're going to start looking at doing some mapping. But if there's additional criteria and things in this, this is, part of the idea is, you know, what are those discerning things that kind of makes that judgment call to go from one to the other? This is kind of that initial list that we came up with.
Thank you.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Just a couple of things. My gut reaction is that 25 stories seems pretty high for Everett. And I was wondering how that number, how you arrived at that number as a first starting point as your maximum height for the RS, or the RM2, I should say.
It's just the tallest that we have in Metro Everett. That's the tallest. And so it's the highest range within it. So that was the only...
Okay. Yeah, it just feels a little high to me for residential zones. The other observation is about some of the characteristics that you were enumerating in your memo and up here for what things that might determine the appropriateness of one zone versus another. Another thing that came to my mind is availability of sanitary sewer. I don't know if we have any areas in the city that don't have sanitary sewer, that are unlikely to have sanitary sewer.
Not many.
Not many, okay. And then the other thing is just adjacencies, adjacencies to other zones. That's a pretty important characteristic. And when you get, as Carly mentioned, when you get into the mapping exercise, that's when it's really going to come out. And you might end up, I think overall, the thrust of where you're going is good, and I think your thinking is sound. But when you actually go to map, you might find that there's room for a third single family zone when you start getting into all the specifics of geography and topography and adjacencies and the highway network relationships to those. I'm okay with two on, in concept, but I just have a hunch that you might find a need for a third one. Maybe not, maybe I'm wrong on that. When you start mapping...
Again, I want to start, I like to push you guys on asking a follow-up question. But so when you think of a third hunch, is it in the uses in here?
In terms of a third zone, you might find there's a usefulness in going to a third single family zone, for instance. Right now, you're proposing two.
Yeah, but what is, why a third zone? Is it development standards or is it the uses?
More the adjacencies that you're going to run into when you start mapping. Again, it's just a hunch. I'm not saying that this is absolutely, I believe this firmly. I'm just hunching that you might find usefulness in going to a, having a third zone in there. But maybe not. I'm just saying, hold yourself open to that possibility. Don't, don't get, don't get too wedded to two zones.
But like on here, the development standards, for example, I mean, is there something that's a third zone that requires something between 4,500 and 7,000 square feet? I mean, again, the difference between 5,000, 6,000 square foot lots is really not discernible. So what, what is a characteristic that really requires a third zone?
It's not the lot size necessarily, but it might be, it might come in, it might be in the height, building height. Might be in the, in the characteristics of the street that it's on. Might be more appropriate to a... Might be more appropriate to allow a little bit more density, even though it's in an R1. Otherwise meets the R1 characteristics.
Okay.
Alan, did you have a?
Yeah, just wanted to comment in response to Commissioner Zelinski's question about 25 stories that the Metro Everett area is going to be included in one of these zones. So the current urban residential zoning will be included under one of the multifamily zones or both. You know, so that's why we've stated up to 25 stories because it would take that standard where it exists. It might, I don't know exactly where it exists in Metro, if we even have up to 25 in a residentially zone part of Metro, but you know, that's why we listed that as a potential height. And again, using that.
I was thinking of outside of Metro. These zones were going outside of the metro area, but.
No, this, this would include Metro.
If they're going to be incorporated in, I don't know.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But honestly, I, I made a mistake. That, that should, none of our residential zones go up to 25, even in Metro. So that, that needs to be, that's our urban mix downtown zone. So that, that needs to be lower, yeah.
And if I could, you know, maybe continue a comment or question for the commission. First, a comment, then maybe a question. The comment being that under our current comprehensive plan, we have to grow by, if we're going to meet our growth targets by 2035. And we may not, my hunch is that we probably won't, but we're supposed to plan for given population level and capacity. And so that would be approximately 53,000 more people by 2035 than we have today. Well, the Vision, the Pius Sound Regional Council is working on extending the Vision 2040 Plan out to 2050 now. And so the numbers that we're hearing back based upon the, what's evolving or emerging as the preferred alternative would be another, instead of 53,000, about 82,000. And so we'd have to increase capacity above what we currently have. And so we're looking at ways that we can do that, that don't assume that everything's going to be put in a high-rise. Right now, high-rise construction is not financially viable. Nobody's building it. We've got places where we allow it, but due to construction costs, it's just not being done here in Everett. So what are some of the more neighborhood-friendly type of densities or standards that we can look at? And so instead of putting everything into a large apartment-style buildings, are there things like the townhouses or duplexes in areas that are, that are able to accommodate density such as near transit? So I guess the question for you is, if we're going to take on or have to plan for more density, what are the areas that are appropriate for, for doing that? Is it in the areas where we have transit? Is it on, on large lots out off of the end of cul-de-sac? You know, those are questions, fundamental questions for you that, you know, we, before we start mapping some of these things, we should perhaps have a little more conversation about where should we encourage density that may not be accommodated under our current zoning when we have to look out beyond our current plan limits.
Commissioner Holland?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments on both the residential and multifamily. My concern is basically that our historic neighborhoods, not necessarily historic overlays, but also just our historic neighborhoods and compatibility. And I, I have some real concerns about duplex, triplexes and fourplexes being allowed in some of these areas that they wouldn't necessarily fit in or, or be compatible. We did adopt some accessory dwelling unit standards that would allow for that, that can be compatible, especially in the alley areas where it's, you know, above a garage or a part of it. And so I think we did a good job with that to encourage that and to allow that. But, but those are my concerns about the residential. And then additionally regarding that, the new legislation related to, that was just signed in, related to small houses and how that's going to affect these zones and allowances and all that. So maybe as we move through this, we can look at that a little bit more. I know we, we just got that, so. And then related to multifamily, my concern is, you know, there's a lot of areas that are predominantly single-family throughout the city, but, or excuse me, zone multifamily, but, or, single-family homes. I mean, just, you know, south of here, it's been zoned multifamily for 50-plus years and you haven't seen those areas convert. And so to prohibit the single-family homes, I'm a little concerned about making, which they're currently allowed in the multifamily zones, to make these properties non-conforming and, and what, you know, that we always have these non-conforming allowances to allow you to rebuild and things like that. But things get complicated when you're talking about insurance and other things like that. And I really hate to see people get caught up in that and not necessarily be allowed to rebuild their home and whether it's a fire or some other tragedy, especially when we're talking about allowing other housing types within multifamily, which includes accessory dwelling units. So if you're allowed an accessory DU, why wouldn't you be allowed a single-family DU? And again, the same thing with cottage housing, but again, as you stated earlier, David, that those would probably be something where an assemblage comes together and, and those things would be built like that. Because I, I don't know, are there six or eight units required or something like that in the current cottage housing provisions in Everett? Do we know?
Sure. Yeah, I don't think there's a minimum number and it's only allowed in multifamily zones anyway.
Okay. So, anyway, so those are my concerns related to, again, and it's, it's ensuring that we keep our historical neighborhoods historic and compatible with these potentially new uses. I, I just hate to see, I mean, for instance, you know, we can talk about the down on Rucker across from, you know, Immaculate there, where we've got this huge multifamily structure. I don't know how many stories it is, five to eight, seven stories or something like that. And right adjacent to it is these larger single-family homes. They've probably been converted into multifamily units now, but it's just so out of place. I don't want to see those kinds of things happen. So. What is it? It's crossed from the Welch, what was the name of the grocery store in a corner there? So anyways, just, just north of Everett Avenue on the west side there, so anyways.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yeah, somewhat related to Commissioner Holland's question. In folding from five zones down to two in each of these, would those two encompass and fold in all of the existing, I mean, actual lots and situations that exist on the ground today? Or would there be people, or some lots, some homeowners, some building owners that would somehow be left out of that and become, all of a sudden, become non-conforming? And I guess I'd be concerned what kind of, if that, if that is the case, that, that seems like it would create potentially some challenges for those people because we don't have a lot of empty space. And we're not talking about in any changes moving forward. We're talking about dealing with people that are in situations that exist now and just changing the, we can change the numbers and, and the designations all we want, but what's on the ground actually exists. So I guess the question is, I mean, by doing this, do these, do they accommodate everything that exists now that, in, in all the current five, when we drop it down to two?
We haven't mapped anything yet. And so, you know, at this point, we don't know exactly how we would map it. And if we did map it in a way that we're careful to try to recognize all the existing developments, but in all likelihood, there'll probably be something that might be made non-conforming unless we allowed for that type of housing with some of the code changes that we're talking about. So for example, we have very little R1A or R2A zoning. Those are townhouse zones, probably less than 20 acres in the entire city. But if we rezone them to RS1 or RS2, in one case, they might be permitted, in the other case, they may not be, based on the concepts that we're talking about here.
So I, I guess I would just say, and I realize that would be the mapping, but that would be a concern I would have about who's getting left out of this and who's being put in a situation where all of a sudden, and they just could create some uncertainty and chaos for certain property owners and homeowners. I guess I kind of wanted to address your question there too, Alan, about how do we accommodate for 80,000 potential new residents in our city? I think that's a very daunting, a very daunting proposition. I, I don't think that we could accommodate 80,000 new people without significantly changing the face of Everett and the character and every, every aspect of, of the city, really, to get to that kind of population growth, almost, almost double, 75% increase or so. So I guess, it just seems to me, we're, we're talking about just a wholesale re, redesign of, of life in the city and the way things go. And honestly, I don't know that a lot of people who live in this city would, would, either want to entertain that thought or they live here for a reason. They talk about wanting to maintain historic neighborhoods. I don't know that it's compatible, thinking that you can accommodate 80,000 people and also maintain historic neighborhoods. We have enough places like that where people.
Be in the preparation, as they say.
Well, exactly. And I, but I mean, I think it's an important conversation to have and it, and it does need to include a lot of people because it is a bigger, larger question. And how do you preserve historic neighborhoods? How do you maintain any single-family, significant portion of the city, single-family, without then creating a particular zone where you've got to build 25-story towers to cram all these people in because you don't want to move them out into the, into the, you know, single-family zones? So I guess the answer to the question is it's a tough question. And so I guess that's why we're starting to have these conversations. And, but I do think that, you know, those are very hard questions and a lot of people need to be involved in those because it's, could have a big impact on, on our city and living here for everybody.
Alan, go ahead. No, what was it, David?
You know, when we did Metro Everett, for example, I mean, part of this is, and I guess to Commissioner Holland's points a little bit too, is that, so part of it is that there's not, there's only 9% of the land zone for multifamily. So part of the reason to have prohibited uses on single families is that we don't want to see that limited land supply underbuilt. So we're trying to get to accommodation of those numbers. If we underbuild those areas, then, then we're not going to achieve those numbers. And so that's part of it. But on the flip side, as Commissioner Holland points out, is trying to find, trying not to put an existing property owner in a hardship because of insurance and other things, because that does happen. And so, so when we look at our non-conforming and some other provisions within the code, trying to make sure that someone that has some kind of hardship is able to do that. And, and for example, we wrote in the provisions in any of the historic overlays that you can do a single family, for example. And so that was an allowed use within a historic overlay area. So that was not a prohibition and we would carry that forward here. But that is a little bit of the answer to trying to accommodate those numbers because we have such limited land that's designated for that. We, we want to try to achieve that density so we can protect the single-family neighborhoods.
Oh, Alan. I feel like I've talked a lot.
Well, I guess the point that I wanted to make is that it's not just about shoehorning numbers into the geography that we have. It's also about housing that meets the income needs of our citizens and residents within the city. The standard single-family detached house, one of the slides Dave, David showed at one of the previous workshops showed that in order to afford the median sales price of a house in Everett, you have to have a household income of $100,000. We have a lot of people in households that, I mean, our median household income in Everett's around $55,000. And so what housing types do we have that would be affordable for a lot of our population, a lot of the households that are already in Everett and future households that, you know, probably will not be able to afford the, basically, excuse me, the options that exist today. And so that's one of the reasons that we're looking at some of the, the missing middle kind of housing and that's something between the single-family detached and the large multifamily structure.
Commissioner Lark?
I can't echo that enough. That's, the, the need for the missing middle is, is huge. I mean, Paris has a greater density populate, per square acre than New York does and it's much shorter. The reason why they have a lot more enriched, kind of missing middle style buildings that aren't too tall, that aren't these massive skyscrapers. And going back to what you said before, you know, the cost of building these eight to 10-story buildings that we see in Seattle and plus they require concrete, that adds the, adds the cost even more and makes sure that families who may, whoever the incomes that live in Everett can't afford, live there. So I, I see, I guess I, I see a lot of benefits to having, you know, that missing middle, those townhomes, those duplexes that are, you know, stick construction, that are much more affordable and accessible to families here. And not only though, but going back to growth, not only I don't think it's shoehorning growth in, I think, you know, in a broader context, the 21st century isn't going to be defined by relations between nation-states, it's going to be defined by relationships between cities and regions. And for us to remain economically viable, to maintain the quality of life we have here and the industries we have here, we need a population base to support that, that we don't think we have right now. Because basically, you know, it must, you must be at least this populated to play as a, in a, in a, in a city-state kind of future that we're moving into. So I think for our, you know, future success, we need to plan for this growth. And lastly, like going back to hardships and challenges, you know, the hardships are already happening to families right now. The, like family is, so making sure that we're using the land to the highest and best use is very important. I talked, you know, I've been talking to a lot of families out there and especially in the multifamily area just in the south of us. Every six months, their rent is going up $100, $150 and their wages aren't going up to increase it. A lot of families have called those places home for, you know, 20 years and they're being priced out because we're not, because we're not building more homes, we're not giving them options. So we, we need to make sure these families who've been here for 30, 40 years and built this community have an option. So that's, that's why I'm really excited to make sure that we're growing the housing stock.
I think also I, I, I agree completely with what you said, but we're not, you know, as, as a municipality, we're not forcing the growth either. It's not about we will meet this target or else it's, growth is coming to Everett and change is coming to Everett. And our job, rather than being reactionary toward it, I, I think if we are strategizing and planning for it and making smart choices in anticipation of the graph that's already happening, you know, it's, we're not experiencing job shortages anymore. This, this economy is a very different animal. It's, we're experiencing housing shortages. So accommodating for that, knowing that the growth is, is here, it's happening right now, is, is smart. And, and I think that for Everett, high-rises aren't an appropriate scale. You know, we, we don't, we don't need that. We, I think that these, the missing middle housing projects are what will maintain, enhance the character that Everett already has. I also worry about our historic neighborhoods. They were the reason that I moved to Everett almost 10 years ago and they're the reason that I stay because I love living in my historic home, in my historic neighborhood. I do see opportunities for, for change and for density in an appropriate way. I think that that's where those design standards will come in though, because I think if we're not being proactive in, in making choices and, and laying out ground rules for those changes, that's when people get disappointed. And that's when, that's when things happen that upset the, the fabric of those, of those neighborhoods, when you haven't established those ground rules. And, and it's important for us to anticipate that that change is coming, but, but I think that we're, we're making really great steps now to sort of nip some of these unpleasant changes in the bud. But I do, I do see that, I mean, we already, we're already experiencing a problem. There's a housing problem and, and it's not too late by any means, but I think that the design standards are, are huge for, for that anticipation.
Do any other planning commissioners have comments or thoughts?
I have a question.
Okay.
One of the comments we have, or one of the elements that we have around the RS2 zones is that it's within a quarter mile or half mile of walking distance for, of transit. You know, I, I was reviewing the land use and transit map that we was provided last time and one of the challenges I see for making more places accessible for that kind of density that we need is that we have some really outdated roads that are not pedestrian-friendly. What can we do to pedestrianize the space as we redevelop it, to make it easier for pedestrians and not cars to get to the transit corridors? Is that part of the plan?
The development standards would require any type of redevelopment, infill. Either they currently do, or we can address that with code changes, that sidewalks would be built where there are none. But it's kind of difficult if you don't have a complete network, if you're a block from the, the next sidewalk, that as this property without sidewalks develops and builds sidewalks, then you have to wait until the next property redevelops to complete that network to, you know, get it out to the transit corridor.
And not just putting sidewalks in places where there's roads, but a lot of places, the roads are meandering and winding, it takes you three miles to get a half-mile, the crow flies. You know, what are we doing to, you know, more or less bring back, which is the best bit of urban planning we've ever done, which is the grit that allows people to walk places very effectively, you know? Like, what can we do to kind of retrofit the suburbs that we have inside our space, to make it pedestrian-friendly?
Good question.
And part of, so part of this is actually a code development, is sort of the plan as to new street layouts and things. But just, for example, as we kind of getting ready for the next step of a mapping exercise, so our GIS mapping person, one of the things we'll have is, I gave you a map with a quarter-mile distance and stuff. And so as we blow up those maps, we'll look to see if there's sidewalks actually there.
Okay.
So that's, in the map that you had, you didn't see that. And so it could be that they're within a quarter or half mile, and there's no sidewalks. And so, so as we zoom in and we look at that, we'll see whether or not there's existing network. And if there isn't one in that area, that would be an area that we would probably pull back or try to find ways to make sure that it could be extended in those areas before having a higher density.
Okay.
So we will be looking at the sidewalks that do exist in those areas.
Commissioner Lavra, do you have any thoughts?
Well, the only question that I had was about the fifty-foot lot width, and kind of falls into what Commissioner Holland said. There's many, many lots in the older parts of Everett that are twenty-five or thirty-seven and a half feet wide. And so they're all not conforming at this time?
Under current code.
There's more density, of course, with those smaller houses, but...
Yeah, they're all not conforming under current code as well.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay, well, I, I actually, my question has to do with procedure in terms of, I know you're kind of going through the concepts now and trying to create the framework, but do you have a general idea of how the timeline's gonna work in terms of this process? I think we have quite a few folks in the audience that are interested in how this is gonna continue to unfold.
Yeah, so the, the general timeline is, again, kind of working through some general ideas. This, between now and the end of this year was, was the idea. We are looking at doing more of a robust environmental analysis of some sort, that we'll look at alternatives and, and start looking at a little bit more deeper issues of some of the economic and social and fiscal characteristics of some of the neighborhoods as well, as part of that. And so the, the formal process of having a draft code, we wouldn't anticipate having until, you know, maybe the first quarter of next year. And hearings maybe in the second quarter of next year. So right now, we're just trying to throw out initial thoughts, you know. For example, you know, I just realized when I put twenty-five stories, I was thinking about Metro Everett, and that's not the residential zones. And so, I mean, these are quick ideas to get some feedback, kind of things on, on stuff like that, so as we can kind of go and start refining this and getting a proposal put together. So we encourage input along the way and dialogue and just thoughts, I mean, concerns that people have. I mean, this is the perfect time to have those discussions take place.
Are you anticipating any formal workshops outside of Planning Commission for the process?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So people will have an opportunity to kind of give some feedback. I like where you're headed. I do think that seeing it on a map will make a difference in terms of what the zones would look like, how they'll manifest. But I like where your concepts are going. So at this time, is there anyone that wants to add any comments or thoughts to this agenda item?
I'm sorry, I am running late, so I have several questions.
You need to speak in the microphone.
You need to speak to the microphone and come and state. So this is not a public hearing, but I know that a lot of folks have kind of come to express...
I was at school.
Hold on, I'm gonna, because you need to state your name and your address, because it isn't recorded.
Carla, should I spell my last name? It's kind of difficult to spell.
It would help.
Carla Antonellis, like two English names. A is in apple, and as in Nancy, T is in Tom, O-N-E-L-L-I-S is in Sam.
Welcome, Carla.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here.
Thank you. I'm late because I'm studying sociology. I'm a sociology major at Everett Community College, and I'm thinking of minoring in criminal justice. And my concern is, first of all, the children of the families that we're going to be serving. And that is because I feel that our neighborhood, the Grand Avenue, Norton Avenue neighborhood, would not be appropriate, because the, the children would be going to possibly the elementary school that's on Federal Avenue. And I don't think, I grew up in a neighborhood in Seattle where it was really close to the projects, low-income housing. And I know that these families are not from the upper echelon. And I think it would be very uncomfortable for the young children to be in that elementary school atmosphere where they are with the upper echelon, and they're not with their social group, so to speak. However, I did go to an, a high school with, really nervous, a high school with all girls, and they were wealthy, there were lawyers and doctors, and, and, and I was supposed to be a lawyer. But again, I, I'm thinking that there's, there's other properties, and the city can have eminent domain, is that correct, on things, where you can acquire property that's...
I'm gonna pause you for one sec, because I think you're speaking about an item that, we're, we're talking about the zoning, and I think you're probably speaking about a item that's happening with the school district. Is that correct? Are you talking about...
No, no.
Okay, you are speaking.
I was actually looking at, at different properties that, that the city has access to, like the waterfront. And I'm thinking that the waterfront would be more advantageous to the kids, because there's more access to the library. And I'm big on kids reading and getting educated, and, you know, less video games and stuff like that. And also, because I, I'm thinking of social inequality. And if there's condos down at the waterfront, why can't low-income people live there? Why can't they have the same zen that I...